We're live.
Thank you. Welcome everyone to Dullish Town Council's planning meeting tonight on the 28th. I've got 28th of June, I think I've got that wrong, 28th of January. I don't know where I am. I'm obviously wishing for warmer months, that's all, that's all I can say to you. Okay, thank you very much. We've got quite a few items on the agenda, so we'll take the first part of the agenda as read. Yola, if you could take us through any apologies for absence we have, please.
Yes, we just have apologies from councillor Foden.
Thank you. Are we all happy to accept the apologies? Can we just have a quick show of hands? Thank you. We have no part two on the agenda, so we don't need to look at that. Does any member present have a declaration of interest for any of the items we have this evening? No? Okay. No declarations of interest? I don't think we've got any urgent or items or dispensations to look at this evening. Thank you, Yola. So have you all had a chance to have a read of the minutes from the last meeting on the 14th of January? It does only seem like a heartbeat away. Are you happy for me to sign that as a true record of the meeting? Can I have a show of hands? Thank you. Okay, can I now ask Yola for the correspondence since the last meeting? And then we will look to see if we have any members of the public who are joining us or anyone who is coming to speak on any of the items. I don't believe there are, but just in case. Thank you, Yola.
Okay, so applications granted in support of this council's recommendation. Golden Sands Holiday Park Week Lane, demolition of existing chalets to use the land for stationing of static holiday caravans and associated works. 16 Pinewood Close, new double garage for approved dwelling. 15 Hatcher Street, single-storey rear extension loft conversion, including rear dormer and roof lights to front and replacement. Applications granted contrary to this council's recommendation. Golden Sands Holiday Park Warren Road, variation of condition two on planning permission 16 oblique 01537 oblique VAR. Variation of condition two on planning permission 91 oblique 1798 oblique 29 oblique 3. To permit extension of season from the 1st of March to the 15th of January to the 1st of March to the 14th of January. To allow caravans to be occupied during the period of the 14th of January to the end of February 2021.
Okay.
Also, Golden Sands Holiday Park Week Lane, variation of condition three on planning permission 16 oblique 02739 oblique MAJ. Use of land for citing of static caravans, tours and caravan and camping, including ancillary buildings for holiday use between the 1st of March and 14th of February inclusive. To allow holiday units to be occupied for holiday purposes between the 14th of February and end of February 2021. Applications refused in support of this council's recommendation. Golden Sands and Peppermint Park Warren Road, use of land for stationing of static holiday caravans, repositioning of play equipment and associated works. And land adjacent to High Tor 2 Cliff Road, two dwellings.
Okay, thank you. Okay, moving on. Have we got any members of the public or anyone who has asked to request to speak on any items? Thank you, Yola. I was pretty sure that was the case because I hadn't heard anything about it. So let us move on then, ladies and gentlemen, for the first item to consider. And that's 20 oblique 0244, it's full planning application at the site of Shell Cove House, 19 Ultimath Road. And it's the erection of a carport to serve the East cottages. Okay, I don't know if all of you know the location of this, but the, there's one turning where the little arrow is that takes you into the site. That's since, oh, for quite a long time, has served the house called Woodpeckers. And the red boundary wall there, on the plan we just flashed by us, is the outside wall of that. And this carport is planned to be adjacent to that. Okay. I think it's got, there's a locked up space at the back of them and there's a, what's it say, individual secure store and a refuge store as well included in the design of it. But they're just kind of carports with an access drive and turning circle there. Okay. Any members, anything, any comments or any suggestions to make on that item at all? Can't see any hands.
And councillor Heath has his hand up, he's waving.
Oh, I beg your pardon councillor Heath, I was looking for the electronic variety. Please go ahead. You're muted. Can you, are you able to unmute?
Right, sorry about that. It's a new screen and new technology, so I hope you can see me clearer, but they're all popping up in different places. And I can't see how to turn the blue hand on because it's not lit up, but there you go.
Don't worry, you've got the mute button sorted, so that's fine, that's a good start. Off you go.
Right, yes. I actually popped over there about two hours ago, the reason being is, then I've had a look at the old stuff. This is, what should we call it, an old favourite, isn't it? Going back many years, they keep on adding all the time, they keep on amending all the time. I do wish builders and architects would actually do it all in one go, so stop messing about. So if anyone's listening, take note. So the basic problem is here. I've actually just had a look at the original planning, I don't think, goes back a number of years before this council, in fact. There was any accommodation for parking or garages in the original plans, which in my opinion was a shocking ambition. They should never have proved it without it. So now we're left with this coming in late. So I thought, I couldn't work out where it was. I'm fascinated and can't make out why they're putting it right up against Woodpeckers. And they've got quite a bit of room there. Why would they want to put up against somebody else's house, making a lot of noise? Now, there is a garage there, so it's not right next to the wall. That's one I'm not happy about. Another thing is, if you look down that drive from the old Timbers Road, you'll now be able to see all those cars parked there. Why wouldn't they put them behind the new houses on their own separate bit? I'm completely puzzled. Can anybody help me on that?
I really can't answer the question. We haven't obviously got a member of the, you know, of the design team with us. I think it's about, I think it's about turning circles from what I can gather and access points from when I looked at it. But anyone else got something to say? Councillor Morehead, do you have your hand raised? If it's about this point, please go ahead.
It is. Yes, councillor Heath. It's not, as I first imagined, to do with the new cottages which are backing on to the old Timbers Road. This is to do with, if you're looking at the drive on the right-hand side, there is a large plot of land there behind an electricity substation. And there are units apparently already approved to go in there. And some of the parking spaces for them are close to the units, in fact, parallel to the property known as Woodpeckers. These, which are six to 11, are to service the rest of the units in this eastern section. I don't understand why they've just come up, but, and I share your concerns that they are very close to Woodpeckers. But I understand that there haven't been any objections, so that's about all I can add.
Yeah.
Can I come back on that?
Yeah.
Well, probably not objections. There's probably not objections because it's only a couple of buildings down there and they're all part of the complex. And originally, they wanted buildings there because they didn't like the mess that was there, so maybe they feel intimidated, but I cannot double guess people. But I'm not sure what was just being stated is accurate, it may well be. But the, on the right of that drive, where the pile of earth is, where they dug it all out for the buildings of the East cottages, we turned that down about four or five months ago because it was a concrete modern block, if you remember. We thought it was completely out of character, unless, of course, you know, it's like different. I haven't seen that come back or overturn and said, it's fine, I've not seen anything. The memory may be a bit weak here, but I didn't think that was approved. And they're not asking for it for that bit. It seems that they're asking for it the bit they've nearly completed. So unless anyone can make that clearer, can you, Gary?
As I understand it, and it might be something that councillor Taylor or councillor Wrigley are just about to say, they've both got their hands raised. As I understand it, we did have before us the block of six townhouses that came up at the last meeting, if memory serves me, with a change of design. They were, whether they're East cottages, I'm not sure. Maybe, I'm trying to, I'm trying to think of my compass. So yes, maybe that's the case, yeah. Councillor Wrigley, you had your hand raised, please go ahead. And then councillor Taylor.
Well, I think I share with the rest of the committee a general state of confusion because there have been so many applications and so many choppings and changings. I was just looking at what I think is the original application, which is 160300, in other words, in 2016. And that shows that the place where I think this carport is, there were an equivalent number of car parking spaces. So it looks to me like they're simply trying to enclose the car parking spaces, which for the, I'm not sure what Woodpeckers is these days, or for anybody living there, I presume, putting a carport around the cars would actually make it quieter for them. And possibly even more private.
Yeah.
So I think this is probably an improvement, what they're showing here, but I am completely confused with the entire site. And it would take some significant amount of time, I think, to try to work out what they're actually doing there. And I would endorse councillor Heath's feeling that, you know, this really should be something with a development like this. It's not that difficult to come up with a master plan and then deal with it, rather than making all these chops and changes all the time. So it's an extremely confusing thing, although probably lucrative for Teambridge Planning Department because he's planning applications, he's got the money.
Point taken.
Given that, as I understand it, no one's complained from the Woodpecker side, I would propose approval or no objection to this as a fairly straightforward carport with all the bins pulled together into one place with their nice little things, because the previous plan showed lots of different places where the bins were stored around the site.
Yeah, okay. Thank you councillor Wrigley, councillor Taylor and then councillor Morehead.
Thank you. Yeah, so having a look at, looking at the site location plan, I mean, it does. Perhaps Yola could just bring it up a little more clearly because the PowerPoint version that I've got here is a bit blurry. I just wonder whether that's something that might, might help us a little. So it's the, it's the first slide, Yola. I don't know whether you're able to.
Zoom in.
So the proposed garage block, all right.
That's the one.
So that's the one, yeah. Site boundaries. It doesn't, it doesn't appear though, as though Woodpeckers is owned by the, by the proposer of the garage block.
That's right. I believe that's, I believe that's the case.
I'm not entirely sure whether Woodpeckers is rented out or whether it's owner occupied.
Owner occupied.
I think I'd be a little bit upset if a quite a large building, bland-looking building really, is positioned quite so closely. I appreciate that councillor Wrigley, and is probably right in saying that there may be less disturbance. I guess it depends what happens within the, within this building. But from my point of view, I'd feel a little bit unsure about, about, I don't like the design very much. And I think it could affect the amenity of the people in Woodpeckers being plonked quite so close to their boundary, on their boundary, but.
Okay. Thank you councillor Taylor. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. I raised concerns earlier because I couldn't relate this particular application to the site. I was concerned that it's very close to Woodpeckers. However, the last item, which is a naming item regarding what was known as Shell Cove House. If you look on there, there is a clear plan. And that gives you a much better idea of what these spaces are for and how they relate. It says on this, this application we're discussing at the moment, that the approved East cottages. Now, the East cottages are these here, to the right of the drive as you go in, what was known as Bob's Bit of Land.
Yeah.
The cottages we've been looking at lately are those with their backing on to Old Timbers Road. And the ones we've looked at two or three times before were proposals for in what was the Orchard.
The Orchard, yeah.
So I personally, I've never even seen this other development. The only one I've seen is the original one with all the flats for Pegasus Life. But this one at least gives you an idea of what you're looking at. And you can still clearly see Woodpeckers on it, which is here. And you can see the row of garages, and there's another row opposite. But these garages, six to 11, are to take up the slack from these building cottages in here. They've got one to five here, and then they've put six to 11 here. I don't know if that makes it any closer, if you've got a chance to look at your own.
No, it does. It makes it clearer that at the moment, that area of land, we haven't, that hasn't come before us. It's, I mean, if you have gone to have a look at it today, councillor Heath, you'll know there's a mountain of earth where those cottages are planning to be at the moment, so never mind the carport.
It actually says for the approved cottages, and I would be happy to be corrected here by our district councillors, who are perhaps more on the ball than I am with planning, but I haven't seen this particular application.
I haven't seen those.
The cottages on, backing on to Timbers Road, I've seen them twice or three times for, in the Orchard. I haven't seen this overall plan to which these garages relate, so I'm a bit confused.
I'm confused myself, but I'm aware of the fact that there might have been items before us. And you've already mentioned the code 16 oblique 00300, and is that, is that the, is that the item that?
Yeah, that is, that is this one. It's, yeah, I've got, get my glasses on again. It's, it's 16 oblique 00300 oblique major.
Yeah. So that's, so in other words, the cottages that are going along Old Timbers Road are both sides of the entrance to what is, at the moment, Woodpeckers, in other words. And that does predate a few of us on the council, I guess, from that point of view. So we wouldn't, wouldn't have a memory of seeing that, so. I'm, I personally don't see.
They haven't included, the way they've configured the east side cottages, they've put one block at a right angle, which precludes them having parking spaces in the same way that the others along Old Timbers Road have got. So that's why they've had to put them somewhere else for part of the properties.
Where we are though, councillor Morehead, is we're looking at the carport. We can't really comment and make changes to an existed approved planning item. So I take your point, but it's, we're looking at the car point, carport, can't even say it at the moment. I must admit, not unlike councillor Wrigley, I don't see an objection. I think the, I think the design of the carport, yes, it's been mentioned that it's bland, but I think it's practical. I think it's got bin storage, it's got shed storage at the back of them as well. And it's very, very practical, so I have no objection to this item, I must admit.
Can I just ask a clarification, Chair?
Carry on.
Perhaps Yola Morehead could hold that plan up again to the screen, which might be helpful. Because there's just a little bit of confusion here with me, maybe I'm the only one who's got the confusion. Right, as you look at that site from the road.
Yeah.
The left-hand lot, which the roofs were changed recently, which we passed, are nearly finished. The bottom bit right in the corner there, you can see on the right-hand side, where the, at the moment, if you go there, it's empty, apart from the massive pile of earth there.
Yeah.
Okay. Are we saying that those buildings there, which this is the blocks for, is for them? Or the bit that's nearly finished? Because what, what I understood, I obviously missed this, that the ones that we turned down, it was about three months ago, on the right-hand side there, if, do you remember them? They were all glass and all concrete.
Yeah, they were on the Orchard site, they were on the Orchard site, councillor Heath. That was a completely different part.
They haven't.
We saw them, we saw them again at the last planning meeting, as I understand. Please refresh my memory, Yola. But we saw the, we saw a redesign of the, of the Orchard development, last planning meeting. Which I'm taking it you didn't attend.
But there we go.
Chair, if I may, this is a complicated site. We could spend a long, long time debating the merits and demerits of the various different bits and pieces of it. All we're asked to do on this meeting today is to look at the carport instead of a car park over the same number of spaces. And whilst I understand everybody's confusion, if you, after this meeting, look at the Teambridge portal and put in the address of 19 Old Timbers Road, you will see the full history of all of the applications there. And there's a fair number of them. And for your own edification and for the next time this comes up, which will undoubtedly be soon, you could possibly have a look through and see, see if that makes any sense.
Okay. Right. So we have a proposal. I'm happy to second that proposal. As I have no objection to it. Are there any other comments that members would like to make at this, at this stage? I think everyone's had a fair chance. I know you've been having some technical problems councillor Lawther, so we've got two of you on the screen at the moment, but. Was there anything you wanted to add or we were about to go to the vote?
No, no, I've actually been able to listen.
Good.
I've been waiting since 10 to 7. And it was just whizzing round, saying, waiting, waiting, waiting on the computer.
Okay.
I've actually, I can't turn it off, so I've got to put it in the kitchen.
That's, that's fine. We, we will, we will go to the vote then. We have a proposal and a second, so we will go to the vote on this to prove, to approve this item with no objection. Those for. Those against. Okay, and that's everybody voted, so Yola, if you can make a note of that, thank you. Okay, we'll move on now to 20 oblique 02382 Capri. It's the name of a cottage on Holcombe Road. Thank you, Yola, for getting that sorted. So this is two dormer extensions and balcony to rear, plus rear raised deck and a detached garage. These are obviously the existing photographs. Okay. Can see that there on the old Holcombe Road there, and obviously it's got a nice view over the Timbers Road and down to the sea by the look of it. Hence why they're putting in the raised decking. I think that's, that's fine, Yola, we might get, need to go back to it, but thank you. If we can come back to members. Okay, I haven't got any members indicating they'd like to speak, but I do understand we do have some objections to this item. Councillor Law, do you have your hand raised? Please go ahead.
You've just beat me to the post.
Okay.
There were two objections to it, and it was overlooking and the gardens and everything. I'll just wait to see what everybody else thinks.
Okay, thank you councillor Lawther. Councillor Morehead, if you've indicated she'd like to speak, please go ahead.
I've tried to study this in some detail. I note that the thing that concerns me most are the three potential future dormer windows, which seem to be overlarge. They're very, very tall. And when you look at the existing elevations, I forget whether they're east and west or whatever now, there is a chimney. Now, I know that they're not using the chimney because they're putting in a flue to serve a log burner. But my concern is, there are no measurements and I find it difficult to work out. Are they actually extending the roof in order to get these taller dormer windows in there, which seem out of proportion to me, compared with the, what you see in the original photos, the old dormer? I'm just a bit concerned as to what's happening there, because these, these new dormers, as one of the objectives says, actually look like sentry boxes, they're very big.
They are, they are quite large, I must admit.
They just don't look, they look out of place to me. And as far as the garage goes, no problem with the garage, other than which way the window faces. If it's totally overlooking somebody's garden, it could be the other end of the garage, couldn't it? You see what I mean?
Yeah, yeah.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Taylor, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. My reading of the plans is that actually the roof is largely unaltered, apart from these two new dormers, gabled dormers to the rear of the property, which, which sit either side of the original gabled dormer at the rear. And, but I don't like the look of them, to be honest. I wouldn't say that they, that because they're of the, you know, the same height and, you know, they don't, they're part of the original roof, that there is necessarily more overlooking to the neighbours incrementally perhaps, but not, not to a great degree. On the other hand, I don't, I really don't like the look of them. I don't think it's particularly good design. So from that point of view, I don't think, you know, I'd be voting for this. I don't know if I'd vote against it. But to, what's tipping the balance for me is the fact that the garage does appear, which is higher than the house. It sits on Holcombe Road. It's swiveled round a little bit, it's better use of the space, but at the same time, the space that it's occupied is going to remove some screening, which is a bit of a shame, but that's, that's to my, to my understanding. Yeah, it's not, it's not a conservation area, they're not native species, there's no TPOs involved. Correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody knows otherwise. So from, but, so from that point of view, it's the only can, can, I guess, do what, do what he wants to on his own, on his own land. But, but I am concerned about the overlooking. There's three V-lux windows, which, because, because of the height of the garage, will overlook the neighbouring property.
Yeah.
So, so from that point of view, I think I would object to this, this scheme, unless, unless, you know, the owner perhaps wants to reposition the garage slightly so that some extra screening can be, can be added to the benefit of the neighbours.
Just as a point to go with what you've just said, really, one of the objections mentions the decking and their concerns that that actually is overlooking the neighbour's garden. And I think they explain it with the wording that says this is a big enough raised deck and balcony to have a party on. So obviously the neighbours have got concerns from that point of view there as well. So I thought I'd just mention that. Councillor Morehead, please go ahead.
Chair, I would like just to help us all to get a better idea of the thing, to ask Yola if she could, A, give us a photograph of the cottage as it is with the one dormer, and then B, the proposed elevation with these three very tall ones in there, please. And we all know, you know, you've all got a picture in our minds. And we all know, you know, you've all got a picture in our minds.
Yeah, so that's the proposed.
That's the original, yes.
Yeah, front and back. And side and the garage. And that's the proposed with, there's the decking and the, and it also shows you within situ.
There is a picture with the three, there we go, these three in all windows.
Yep. Not going above the ra, the roof height, as councillor Taylor mentioned, but quite substantial.
Very intrusive. Yeah, it's my opinion, sorry.
Okay. Councillor Taylor, you wanted to come back? And.
Yes, I did, thank you, Chair. Can you hear me? Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, please go ahead.
So, so, yes, the, 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 the design, I don't think it looks very good. But the, in, in defence of the applicant, I thi, I don't think the decking is, is that intrusive, if you, if you look at the original layout of hard standing at the rear of the property as it currently is. It doesn't appear to be extended very much into the garden ever at all, it does seem to be extended slightly to the side. But that's well with, well within the, the curtilage of, of the, of the garden, well, well within it, so I don't actually think, and, and yeah. If they have a, a good, a big shindig, yes, certainly it'll, it will create, create a bit of noise, but then, you know, who's, who wouldn't if they were having a party in their garden? So I, so I don't think, I don't think that decking to the side actually does add substantially to, 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 to the problems for the neighbours, I don't know what other people think.
Okay. Councillor Moorhood, you've already spoken, so can I, I'm gonna bring in councillor Heath first, if that's all right.
I'll take it down, it was accidental.
Okay, thank you pardon, councillor Heath.
Thank you, Chair, my little blue hand doesn't seem to be working, I don't know why.
Well, it's, it's working at the moment, so.
Is it? Oh, it doesn't show the send, that's very strange, okay.
Fine.
Yeah, I'm sort of fairly open mind, I'm more on the side of saying, I think it's an over development and the points on the two objections seem to be quite valid, but coming within quite close to the actual boundary etcetera, and they are going to lose some amenity and some light. I don't object on principle, but it's a pity that the overall design is not just a little bit smaller, because obviously, as you can see from that photograph, it's quite a small building and it making it quite a lot bigger. And so, and that, in that respect, I, I would feel that I'd like to say let's turn it down and let Teenbridge go and have a really good look at site visit, while you know, they're not doing all the site visits, but they ought to, and really sort of suss it out and have a really good look, and if they overturn us, fine, but I don't feel happy enough to say yes on this, I'm afraid.
Okay, thank you councillor, councillor Wiggley, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, as far as I remember, if I've got this right, the, this is quite a steep patch, isn't it? And the houses technically behind, but between this house and the sea are quite low down in comparison to this one, so I think the, the balcony and the big windows could seem to be quite oppressive from those houses, which are, as far as I remember, coming back up the driveway to the house next door, a long way down.
Yeah.
I think the overlooking emphasis on this is quite significant. I think it does, it will make it very prominent and almost intrusive to those three houses down below it towards the sea.
Yeah, those are the bungalows, some of the bungalows that are on Old Timmouth Road that have, some of them have been developed, some haven't, I'm not sure exactly, but I would take a guess that at least one of the objections is from one of those properties.
I think two of them are from two of those properties.
Yeah.
From the map.
Yeah.
So I, I, I would be inclined to object to this on the grounds of overlooking and disruption of privacy for the neighbours.
Okay. Overlooking, overbearing.
Yeah.
Okay. You're waving at me councillor Heath, but I'm afraid you're muted, so from that point of view, okay. Does any other members want to, to have a a say on this item? I think nearly everybody has who's wanted to, okay. We haven't had a proposal this yet, but I'm happy to propose from the chair. Okay, councillor Moor, I looked just up, but there you are, go ahead.
Sorry, I would personally, I'm concerned about the proportions of the proposed dormer windows, which adds to this concern and objection about the overlooking, I think the size of them is really out of proportion to this relatively small building. So it's all part of the same overlooking problem, I think.
Okay, I think councillor Taylor, you mentioned the the dormers, but I don't think you had a problem, did you, from that, from, from that point of view, refresh my memory, I don't want to put words into your mouth. You're on mute, Gary, sorry.
So I, I, so I'm, I, I don't think the house has a, has a, an over, a particularly over, overbearing appearance, but the, but the garage does. So from, so from that point of view, I'd support a refusal. With the application having, having some overbearing features.
Right, okay, thank you for, for that addition, I'm, I'm going to propose from the chair that we recommend refusal for this item on the grounds of overbearing and overlooking. I think it encompasses both the garage and the house, I think there are aspects, in my opinion, where it does, it does involve overlooking and overbearing from the house as well, but that's just a matter of opinion. Councillor Heath, were you, wanted to come in, please go ahead.
I would like to second it.
Thank you very much, I wondered if that's what you were going to do, so we have a, a proposal and a second. So we will go to a vote, please, ladies and gentlemen. For okay, thank you, that's unanimous to refuse this item, so thank you. Alright, so if we could take us to item three, which is twenty one Trebelo two six, and this is twenty two Emson's Hill. Extension to existing garage to provide trailer and garage storage, front porch extension and rear kitchen extension. I think this is one of the houses on the top of the hill that's quite you kind of look down to it, as it were, down to the, to the property from the actual road. If memory serves me right. Could we scroll through it just again, Yola, just to make sure everyone's clear on that, and then we'll come back to so two houses down from the Bad Lake Hill junction. Hopefully members have had a chance to have a look at this one. Okay. And councillor Taylor, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, the slightly confusing, this, the front porch of the house isn't in the path of the house, which is closest to the road. It's close to the garage. So but it, but it does seem to, you know, need that porch there, otherwise the front door opens straight into straight quite, quite close to where the stairs are. Overall design, it's okay, I've no, no real objection to it, it looks, they look very practical improvements to the house.
Okay, thank you for that, councillor Moorhood, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Yes, it's on a very steep hill going up the road, it's also on a steep hill looking down Emson's Hill, down, sorry, Bad Lake Hill. It's quite a large extension, the, the garage part with the trailer area seems reasonable, it's, it's parallel to their boundary, and, but it's only anywhere near the next door's garage, so it's not affecting the next door house. And although it is in a way, you might say overlooking if it was on the level, but because it's already so high above the houses down the hill, I can't see any problem or any objection to it.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Moorhood. Was there any other comments from any other members, has anyone got anything else to say on this one at all?
I propose we go no objection.
Excellent, councillor Moorhood. I think I'm reading your lips and you want a second. Like, my lip reading is definitely improving, yeah, that's fine, thank you.
I hope not.
So, all right, okay, interesting. Councillor Lowther, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
I know I'm taken into consideration that I'm not on full working order here to and put a blue hand or a green hand or whatever the hand up on in my own. And all I was going to say, really from the beginning, because I did have my hand up very, at the very beginning, but not a blue hand, it was my hand. And, and I, I, I feel it's a large plot. And I, I don't think it's going to affect neighbours or anything, and I would go along with it.
Okay, thank you for that councillor Lowther, sorry if I missed your, your real hand.
I don't know what is happening in this house today.
Okay.
Literally speaking in the kitchen.
All right.
I don't know what is happening, I don't know what's happened, I can't turn it off.
Okay, councillor Heath, you wanted to make a point, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair, just a little technical point for, for Mary and Alva. Yeah, on the bottom of the screen, if you've got a little smiley face with reactions on it, if, if you've got that there, you've got, that's where you raise the hand, so that's, but they're all different unfortunately, depending on your technique.
I don't think she's got, I don't, she's shaking her head, she hasn't got that, so we'll, we'll, we'll leave that, we'll leave that there.
Anyway, the planning point, there is no objections on the website, so, you know, no objections.
Okay, thank you for that, well, we've had a proposal and a second, so we will go to a vote recommending approval for this item, so please, show of hands if you approve. Thank you, everyone's happy with that one, thank you. Right, moving on to the next one, which is twenty one Trebelo nine six, and this is full planning application for Gatehouse Farm, Secration Lane, that's not going to be said too many times, is it, now? This is for a sustainable urban drainage system and a detention basin for Kavarna Homes. Go ahead, Val, if you, you wanted to, to speak, carry on.
As we know, there's been a lot of development for over several years now along Gatehouse. And as those of us who live around Dorish also know, there is frequently a flooding problem in the lane.
Yeah.
The original plans, I've read through a lot of it, the original plans were going to create the usual pond as a suds. It's a staple, you know, drainage system. However, they've discovered strangely that there's a high water level, groundwater level, and so they cannot use a usual system of lining a pond area because it will be buoyed up. So they had to come up with a, a different plan completely, which is to put these great big crates in to hold the water back and let it out gradually into the drainage and ditch systems, and they've got all sorts of facts and figures for it. I mean, it looks as if it's the obvious thing that they have to do.
Yeah.
But my, the, one little note that I would say is rather sad in a way, because when there are open ponds, it does give a, a lift to the biodiversity of the area and the, the general ecology. We won't get that because these are going to be buried under earth and then landscaped, but it looks as if it's inevitable. I'm just surprised it's taken this long to find out, but.
No, I, I, I take your point, Val, and I do.
I mean, I, I would see that we, that I wouldn't see that I could object to it, they know what they're doing, and I think all of us know what the problems are down there with water, so if that's the only way they can get around it, then.
I do notice they are landscaping and there are some trees in there as well in the, in the plan, so at least that's something, but it's, I do take your point. I can't see anyone else with the hands raised on this one, is everybody happy from that point of view? Councillor Wiggley, please go ahead, if I missed your electronic one.
No, you, you, you didn't, Chair, I didn't put it up, sorry.
That's all right.
I think as, as councillor Moorhood says, this is, this is inevitable, and, and there's little we can do on this one, but I would like to continually object to planning applications that come forward without sufficient drainage in their original thinking. And this is a problem that we see all the time, we know this, this valley is part of the critical drainage area. We know that it's very wet fields, we know that it's problematic. As far as I recall, this one had all sorts of weirdness when they submitted their application in two parts in the first place, if I remember rightly. They submitted the suds separately to the first planning application. I think we suggested that we reject the first planning application because it didn't have suds and reject the second one, which was the suds, because it didn't have any houses to need suds. But it's, it, it's, it's a bonkers thing to think you can build in this sort of area without dealing with the water.
Yeah.
And it, it, it's yeah, it doesn't surprise me that they found problems with it. But I think there's a sort of like, like, like we say, a sort of a inevitability about this, and there's not an awful lot we can do to, 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 to work through it, I mean, I didn't see, I didn't look at enough of the details of the reports on it, I must confess, to see if, and I've lost the details, to see if there was a, a teen bridge or Devon drainage experts had backed up their plans. Were they there?
Yeah, I don't, I sorry. Can, are you able to comment on that, Yola, or is that, it's not something I've noticed in the plans when I've read them, I must admit, but I'm just asking whether you've, whether you've noticed any details from either Devon County Council or Teenbridge District Council with these plans at all?
I didn't, I didn't specifically note all the different reports, but I know there was an awful lot on there to do with drainage and ecology management, which I was hoping people would look at beforehand, but it's, yeah, I know there was, yeah, there was quite a lot on there, but whether it was specifically Devon County, I, I can't recall, I'm afraid, I'm sorry.
Okay, no, that's fine, thank you.
So Chair, I've just gone back to the application and checked through, no, there was nothing from any of our experts. So I would, I would like to raise an objection to this in that there is no Devon County or Teenbridge independent assessment of their plans being functional and feasible.
So to to recommend it be from the point of view of recommending refusal or recommending that this is only goes forward with the approval of those two bodies from that point of view.
I think probably your second, second point is the more, more effective one.
No, absolutely, if that's the case and there's no mention of the two, then I think that's the most important point. We have other members who'd like to, to say something, councillor Heath, I'm going to bring you in first, as you haven't spoken on this one yet, and then councillor Moorhood, please.
Okay, thank you, Chair, although councillor Moorhood was before me, but.
No, you, I've spoken.
Oh, yes, well, yeah, I'll take your point on that, that one, right. Yeah, the, the plan of all the houses there, has any of these foundations been dug yet?
Oh, yes.
So how far up are we with these?
We are practically all the way up to where the, where the bathing pool suds is, is at the moment.
What meant is that it got the roof on, that sort of thing?
Yeah.
Oh, right, okay, so they've discovered it late in the day, shocking, I agree with councillor Wiggley, we should raise an objection in this day and age of technical abilities to suddenly think, oh, the ground is boggy, is absolutely pathetic.
No, I think they were aware of that. No, I think they were aware of that. In fairness to, to Cavanagh Homes, I think they were aware of that. I think this is the first time the actual plan has come before us.
It was boggy, but the fact of having to change the drainage at a late stage like this is, is pretty bad. So, yeah, I would go with what councillor Martin Reek said, that we do need to raise some sort of banner, we need to do better next time.
Okay, thank you. Councillor Val Morehead, please go ahead.
They, their paperwork does refer in detail to all the Devon County Council requirements and specifications. But yes, there isn't a separate one in there. The interesting thing is that the suds swimming pool, if you like, that they had intended to use for the first part of the development would have been all right, but then they've now, there's another second part to the development and then they've realised that that won't serve the two. And hence all this change of plan, literally.
Yeah, they've literally had to do that same again.
I don't see why such a, a national company couldn't have foreseen these things. I, I think it's inevitable that, that they will need, it'll need to be approved. But I'm quite happy to go along with what councillor Wiggley said and what councillor Heath has supported, that I don't know how we'd put it really, that we would like to see input from the local authorities, their approval.
Yeah, okay. Well, we will work on the, the wording now, if that's all right. Councillor Wiggley, you happy to, to string something together for us, please?
I think we, I'd say something along the lines of no objection subject to details being thoroughly scrutinised by Devon and Teambridge flood and drainage authorities. And we note that developments of this nature should be expected to get the drainage right first time. Confidence in their abilities are questioned when they have to have a redesign partway through.
Okay. And are you happy, I've, I've kind of put the words into your mouth, or you've put the words into your own mouth, but to take that as their proposal, and councillor Heath, you were sounding like you were seconding. So are you both happy with, with that councillor Heath, are you happy with the wording of that? Okay, thank you. Yola, have you got all the information you need from that point of view, from a proposal and a second? Thank you. Right, members, I can't see any other hands, so we will go for a vote on that one, please. Thank you. That's, everyone's voted unanimously, thank you. Right. Good point, well made. Let us move now on to, it's a tree preservation order. 2100136, and this is Holcombe Hall. And it works as specified in the submitted report, which I must admit, I did have a look at. Thank you, Yola. So this has been, this item is, this area has been before as before. Some of these are prunings, some of these are just small. So felling and replace a dying pine. Fell and replace a dying quercus. Remove two branches from a Monterey pine, so it's, it's quite a list of eight items of proposed work, some of it are pruning, otherwise it's replacing. And these graphics make it quite more exciting than perhaps it is. Councillor Morehead, you have your, your hand raised, please, please go ahead while we're, we're scrutinising these photographs.
I think, and Yola will correct me if I'm wrong, but I think that it says that the delegated officer is Mr Mark Waddams. In which case he is the arboriculturist for Timbridge, Holcombe, and my, I would propose that we leave it to his decision.
Absolutely. As you, you've, you've been here before councillor Morehead and we, we've done, we do exactly that, that.
He is actually the delegated officer for this one, so.
Absolutely, absolutely, that's fine. Councillor Wiggley, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you. It, it, it's nice to see when somebody is making changes with the trees, that whilst they're felling one, they're actually replacing it as well.
Yes.
So in my view, I'm happy to second councillor Morehead. So long as Mark Waddams is happy with it, I have no objection.
Okay, thank you. Are you happy for that to be a proposal from you councillor Morehead, as, 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 thank you. Okay, wow. Any other members have anything else to, to say on this one? No? Okay. So we have a proposal to defer this to the registered tree officer, as he is the designated officer, as councillor Morehead has mentioned. Proposal and second, so let's vote on this one, please. Thank you very much. Approved unanimously, lovely. We now...
Sorry, could I just clarify, is, was that no objection subject to the tree officer? Or was it you're deferring to the tree officer?
I think it was no objection subject.
No objection. Oh, okay. It was just because I had the word defer, and I know previously sometimes it's not been a no objection, it has been a defer, so I just wanted to.
No, it's, it was a, it was a no objection deferring to, yes, I saw what you mean, getting you very confused, apologies.
Yeah, but don't confuse me.
I will try not to. Right, we now come to a naming consultation. I'm, I'm looking forward to seeing what Yola's going to be putting up on the screen now. I'm hoping she's come up with some really good, no, I'm thinking not. Right, okay, so we'll have to have a whiteboard and some marker pens instead. From that point of view, we have before us the name Shell Cove, which is proposed by the developers. And what they're really asking for is any other ideas or any other thoughts we have for the site of the former Shell Cove House. If we can come up with two or three names.
Sorry, Chair, just, just for clarity, is it one name for the entire site? Or are they looking for sort of individual, individual road names, which is what we're usually asked for on estates? But it's just one name for the entire site and they're all just numbered within that?
That's right, that's right. Instead of being number 19 Old Timoth Road, I think they're, they're looking to propose Shell Cove for the site because there's the one, there's the one access point. And, and then I guess it's as, as the development on the site of former Shell Cove House, they want the site to be Shell Cove. That's what they've proposed, they would like us to see if we're happy with it or if we have any alternatives, and in which case they'd like at least another two or three names in case of duplication.
Personally, I think Shell Cove works quite well, especially with all the sort of the planning, planning applications going round and round. It's a bit like that chap outside the, in the street with three shells and you have to find out where the P is in terms of which is the relevant planning application. So maybe it should be the Shell game, but Shell Cove, I think is, is, is appropriate. It's what everybody knows it as, and, and I don't see why, I don't see any need for anything else, to be honest.
Okay, councillor Morehead, thank you for your patience, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Yes, I mean, the house was built in the 1800s, I think it was by Reverend Kenaway, which is why the one part's called Kenaway Tunnel. It was bought by the Jameson family in the very early 60s and they, as a family, worked to turn it into holiday accommodation and apartments, as well as a family home. They called it Shell Cove. Actually, as everybody will know, the cove below it, which at that time you could access from Shell Cove House, is actually Horse Cove, which would not be a very good name. But I, I, I agree with councillor Wiggley, everyone's known it as Shell Cove. And I think it would be a nice tribute to the 60 years that it's been known as that. Everybody knows that part as Shell Cove and I, I don't see any reason to change it.
Okay, thank you for that. Councillor Heath, you have your hand raised, please go ahead.
Thank you, Chair. Well, I'd just like to thank.
Sorry, councillor.
Yeah, right. Are you, are you with me now?
Yeah, I think so.
The, the thing went. Yeah, I'd just like to thank everybody for the history lesson, it's right. I didn't, now I've got the history group tonight, but.
Councillor Morehead is a mine of information, councillor Heath.
Something important, what Mal was actually said, that basically it keeps the history going. We can come up for the sake of wanting to show off with a fancy name, but it's, it's probably a bit stupid, so I think we should go with it.
Okay, thank you for that. I mean, I must admit, I agree with all that's been said, it's, that's, that's the name it's had on it for a long time, and that's what I know it as. So I think that's why I carry on calling it, even if they put up another name from that point of view. And I think a lot of locals would be exactly the same, wouldn't they? So, okay, so I'm happy to propose from the chair that we, we take this as, as read and that we're happy with the, with the name of Shell Cove. So we will have a quick vote on that and see if everyone is agreed.
If it was the same.
Mary, are you, are you happy with that? No? Okay, thank you. You're having technical problems tonight, aren't you, Mary, sorry? All right, thank you. And so that's everyone's happy with that one. And I believe that's.
Chair of a mate, were we not also asked to provide some alternative names? I appreciate that, that we don't feel that there should be an alternative name, but Yola, could you, could you?
Say that?
Yeah.
Just clarify, please.
Yes, I can clarify, because I have a feeling the, the email that came through with the documentation that was obviously circulated with the agenda, I think it's probably a standard template email, which is why it, it sounded a bit clunky when you actually read the initial thing. But it, I think if, if you're happy with Shell Cove, there's no, no need for alternates. If you need alternates, give two or three, just in case there's a duplicate.
That's how I, that's how I read it. So, yeah, if we're happy with Shell Cove, we can, we can pause there, ladies and gentlemen. So thank you very much for your time this evening, and I think that's brought the meeting to an end, so thank you for your time.